My fault. For it, so. We can move to public comment. There is one, this one piece of public comment to put into the record. Uh, there's no minutes, so we don't have to. We'll move to the public hearing tonight is regarding text amendments. Uh, Paul has, uh, Paul, he will give us a brief summary of it. I have an exhibit that lays it out to then I'll mark as, uh, Exhibit One for this hearing.
You just sound as far as from the testimony about to give it the cause now and here will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you guide.
I do. Um, Chairman Paul Haas, New Page County Building and Zoning Department. Uh, We come before you tonight to have the board consider Exhibit One, which is our proposed text amendments, New Page County zoning ordinance. New Page County Development Committee, um, as we often, as we always do in these cases, uh, Took the matter up for at least consideration to send the zoning board appeals, uh, at their last development committee. Authorized us to bring these proposed text amendments forward to that public hearing tonight. Um, just very briefly, a lot of these, um, text amendments are based on last, the last year's, uh, Issues that have come up before the zoning, um, before the zoning department or zoning division and also come up, uh, Through various complaints or concerns at the county board level, you know, development committee level. And also some of these text amendments represent, um, some proposed changes based on initiatives that have been started by the county board. Um, very quickly, uh, the most important one that's before you tonight has to do with video gaming. In two thousand nineteen, the county board approved video gaming, but didn't have, didn't develop any codes or ordinances, um, That, uh, dealt with the land use considerations relative to video gaming. Over the last three years, uh, that we have been issuing liquor licenses relative to video gaming for the state of Illinois, uh, gaming requirements. We found that there's some issues relative to, uh, the land use components of, uh, of video gaming. Uh, so the text amendments tonight include some new, uh, definitions relative to video gaming. Also relative to restaurants where video gaming is allowed by, uh, the county liquor control code and also the state code, uh, state gaming code. Also some changes relative to gas stations, uh, and truck stops, uh, where video gaming is, is in theory permitted on the state codes, Uh, and under the county liquor, uh, control codes. Um, the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance are going in tandem with some changes that are being made in the county liquor control records as well. And most notably, what we are doing is, is that we are creating the, the opportunity as exists right now, but clarifying the opportunity for gaming devices to be allowed in, Uh, restaurants with caverns in, but also, um, they are in theory allowed in convenience stores, in fraternal, uh, and veterans organizations, Such as the Oles Club and BMW and things like that, uh, but also by state law, they're allowed in truck stops. So one of the things that we're doing with these, uh, proposed changes is to clarify, uh, and put definitions on these types of land uses. More specific definitions, these types of land uses, and then also became where they would be permitted as a right or be permitted by condition gives. Uh, they still would have to go in, in through the process of getting a liquor license because under the state law, in order to do video gaming, Have to have a liquor license to pour liquor on a property. So, uh, these, these proposed text changes will help with our land use considerations. In addition, um, we've changed the parking regulation relative to, uh, video gaming locations. Right now, video gaming, uh, locations are effectively only allowed in a lot of, uh, uh, in commercial zoning districts where you have a restaurant. If you have a restaurant, our code says you have to have certain amount of parking spaces for the restaurants, which in part exceed, Part of way exceed what a typical gaming facility really requires. We've had some zoning cases before this zoning board appeals, where people have asked for variations to reduce the number of parking spaces for restaurants To accommodate solely a video gaming, uh, facility that serves beer and wine and adds some light food services. Um, the metrics and the data that these folks who have come in before the county zoning board appeals, Uh, have shown us is, is that the actual video gaming device facilities have a, a dramatically less number of parking needs than the typical restaurant. So we put some parking requirements in there to really, uh, to, uh, Be measurement of the, the actual needs of video gaming facilities. Um, this will also ensure that existing video gaming facilities that we have in New Page County, um, will, uh, Be compliant with our, these new zoning codes relative to video gaming facilities. We're also adding a video gaming cafe, so we can distinguish those types of facilities from restaurant facilities. Because really, these video gaming facilities are not restaurants. They're more of a cafe where the main use of the, of the, of the property is for video gaming, Not for a restaurant or other things. Uh, so that's something that we are looking to, to move forward and that's, as I said, going forward with the liquor control changes. The other, um, Change to the zoning code has to do with beekeeping. The county board has seen many people that have come before the county board looking to have, Feel these on their residential properties. As you're aware, the county does allow for, uh, agricultural uses of properties that are over a given size by right, So long as you can do it as part of four H project. This proposal would allow for beekeeping, similar to what we did with the chicken ordinances, Be allowed as a right on a residential property, but the property is less than forty thousand square feet in size. It would limit the number of bee eyes to no more than two. You would also have to be required to get a four H certificate and you'd also have some setback parts, similar to what we did with chickens. The idea of having this, uh, come through as a right in a property less than forty thousand square feet residential zoning district With a four H program is that there will be some guidance, there will be some additional certification, uh, that the property has to go through four H. In addition, the state requires that you receive, uh, a certification from the state, the Department of Natural Resources, uh, to be able to, I'm sorry, Department of Agriculture, To be able to have bees in property as well. So, uh, While the county is not asking for people to do anything extraordinary necessary for county, um, we are still asking For these certificates from the state of four H because, um, we're comfortable that those two organizations will make sure that beekeeping activity, Activities and the education that's association associated with having bee eyes on your property will be well documented with the state. The, um, next requirement has to do with fencing, next change has to do with fencing. We have, and you've seen, we, you haven't really seen it yet in some more appeals, but we've seen it at the zoning hearing officers, uh, of public hearings, Where people have come in and asked for zoning to, to be able to have a taller fence immediately adjacent to the property line in a corner side yard. We have, for the last twenty years or so, we, we require that fences in a corner side yard, uh, Within the first ten feet of our side yard, fence to only be four feet high and fifty percent open. At ten feet, uh, you can go to six foot six and hundred percent closed. Uh, we found that in, uh, in probably a hundred instance, in instances since we've had that go into place, we've had property that was coming in and asked for zoning. And almost in every instance, they've been able to prove up that putting a fence, uh, within that ten feet, Three inches from the corner side property line has not been a problem. Uh, there's been no objections from neighbors, uh, and it, and practically it doesn't create a problem. Historically, the reason we had that setback requirement is that you would, in a corner side yard, you typically have the property adjacent to the corner side yard, a front yard of the property. But what we wanted to try and do is preserve the ability for that property owner, who has a front yard, to be able to drive off their property and not be blocked by a fence when they're trying to take it out of. Even in instances where we do have a front yard of a property, maybe a corner side of another property, uh, those neighbors have indicated that there's really no issue with my sight. And in many instances, one of the reasons there is no issue is because there's already landscaping there. There's big trees, vegetation That would have blocked the line of sight, which is removed if anybody. So what we're proposing to do is to, is to allow people to put fences right up Over the three inches of the property line at six foot six, which is the maximum height that, that a hundred percent will take without having to go through.
Okay, my question is.
Yeah, let me finish up there. Uh, so that's what we're proposing with the fence regulations. Um, relative to places of assembly, that's just simply a cleanup situation. Um, we are adding to the definition of place of assembly, all of the types of places of assembly that are allowed. This comes back from two thousand and ten ordinance change where we took religious institutions and, and took that out of the main definition Section because of the lawsuit that was filed against the county and federal court. And so in order to sort of neutralize, uh, uh, the, the terms and the nomenclatures that were pretty well charged with use, Religious institutions, things like that, we changed the nomenclature in place of assembly and put different types of land uses in place of assembly from, Uh, typical religious institution churches, uh, synagogues, mosques, temples. Uh, we added that, that those uses as religious institutions with schools and recreation facilities, uh, and social facilities. So as to make sure that we were not sort of, uh, created a situation where one might think that we're focusing on one particular type of use That, uh, could be a little problematic in terms of First Amendment rights. Um, we just decided to, to use the term place of assembly. And then enumerate and itemize different places of assembly. What we're trying to do is get rid of that altogether and just add as the permitted use in each of the zoning district, The term place of assembly, and then we're going to define place of several more specifically in the definition section. That's all this is doing here. Um, as it relates to passenger and commercial vehicle regulations, what we're doing there is that we are changing the definition of Passenger and commercial vehicles based on the state motor vehicle code. Currently, our zoning ordinance, um, Define a passenger vehicle and a commercial vehicle as a passenger vehicle, a vehicle will raise gross vehicle weight rating eight thousand pounds or less And a commercial vehicle be, uh, gross vehicle weight rating of more than eight thousand pounds. State motor vehicle code has changed to ten thousand and one pounds. Commercial vehicle is a vehicle now with the state motor vehicle code of that, of, Weight of ten thousand pounds. So we're just changing the county zoning ordinance here in the state. Um, as it relates to new regulations regarding accessory structures of buildings, um, right now for a piece of property that is forty thousand square feet or Uh, smaller in size, the maximum square footage that is allowed of a piece of property for detached accessory buildings individually or provided is Six hundred and fifty square feet. If you're over forty thousand square feet, there's a multiplier associated with that multiplier is point zero five six two five. And what we have found is, is that we have, we don't see a lot of zoning board appeals, but as invention of events, as we see this allowed that the zoning hearing officers, public hearings, People coming in and asking for increased sort of footage of detached accessory buildings. So what we have done is we've come up with a new multiplier that multipliers point zero two. And what that does is it takes, um, any piece of property that's forty thousand square feet or less, as a right, The total square footage of a thousand square feet for detached accessory buildings, we're raising that six fifty to a thousand. And then at anything over forty thousand, we take size. Uh, point zero two five, I'm sorry. The rationale for that is, is that, uh, what we found is, is that in the zoning, we're, you're entitled to have six passenger vehicles, six passenger vehicles at a typical, Uh, parking stall apartment in zoning ordinance, uh, a waste to a certain square footage, uh, being multiplied by six times, uh, Roughly a hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, and then in addition, you're entitled to have a divided square feet of Storage area for recreational vehicles, RVs, campers, boats, things like that. When you add all that together, you're entitled to essentially have around a thousand square feet of square footage covered with cars And recreation vehicles. But at the six hundred and fifty square foot level, which we really have, we're, we can't put all that stuff inside building. So the idea here is, is that to sort of accommodate the amount of vehicles and recreational vehicle area that you're allowed to have on the property By going up to a thousand square feet, you can at least now put all those vehicles inside the building that they ask us. Typically, what we find is people coming to ask for zoning things, they're saying, I got all these vehicles, I got all this stuff that I'm entitled to have on my property, But I'm not entitled to build, build a large enough building to accommodate them. This change would accommodate all at the same time. It wouldn't. We don't think you have an impact adjacent properties by having, you know, larger buildings on. Think that the property would count. And we've seen zoning be granted to accommodate these things. The next, uh, and last item here is new residential guidelines relative to, um, existing what are called historic lots of record. The county, um, zoning code says that for any new lots, uh, that are developed in the county, depending on the zoning districts. Uh, if you're on septic and well, for the most part, the minimum lot size that you're required to have is a forty thousand square foot lot. Depending on if you have sewer to the property, that number goes down to twenty thousand square feet. And if you have sewer and water to the property, depending on the zoning district you're located in, you would have fifteen thousand square foot lots or ten thousand square foot lots. So depending on the different utilities, you would have much longer lots. There's another provision in zoning code that says we have a historic lot of record. Um, a historic lot of record is a lot that was planted before nineteen fifty seven and looks the same way today as when it was planted before nineteen fifty seven. Those are what are called historic lots of record. About fifteen years ago, we changed our ordinance to create the historic lot of record concept. Prior to that, those lots were legal. They were grandfathered in and they were considered legal not conforming. The, the theory of legal not performing is that if you've got a legal not performing piece of property, it's legal, but it doesn't conform to the zoning ordinance. And from a government standpoint, you can still get building permits and things like that. You might need some variations, it's all you believe. But more importantly, from the private side of things, the title companies, the insurance companies, the financing companies. Once they saw the term legal not conforming, that created a bit of a problem, uh, that the problems were able, that they were relatively easily reconcilably. It asked the county for a letter, they sent the letter out, they explained things. But it was difficult sometimes to get insurance on legal not conforming properties, but they're able to get title insurance, they're able to get the financing. So we changed, uh, legal not performing of these lots to historic lots, which made them automatically legal. And the requirement to be able to build on historic legal lots of record was that there were no lot size requirements. There were only lot width requirements. A lot with requirements are that if you had a property that was historic, built prior to fifty seven, planted prior to fifty seven, Been a lot with more of lots of septic above sixty six feet wide on a sewer and well fifty feet wide and a sewer water torrent. The reason we came up with those numbers at the time is that when we looked at all the historic subdivisions out there throughout the county, there's about twenty of them. Most of the lots of the subdivisions were developed anywhere between fifty and sixty six, there's, or sixty seven, sixty eight feet, uh, wide lots. So we just, those numbers came from, sort of, you know. What we found is, is that When we created that law, people were able to redevelop those properties and go change, help those neighborhoods out. So in the last fifteen years, that concept worked. Now what we're doing because of the initiative from the county board where they are trying to develop more housing for people, more housing that's portable to people. One of the things that we have found is take these historic lots of record and make a very minor change to them. That minor change is that rather than having those three different levels of whether or not you're building, We're just, we're getting rid of the requirement that if you're on septic, you have sixty six feet long. Sewer water or sewer about fifty feet in the sewer part of the property. We're getting rid of that, saying, if your lot's fifty feet wide and it's a historic lot of record, Then there are no requirements to build on it in terms of providing sewer part seventy five dollar operation there. If your lot's fifty foot wide, planted before fifty seven, looks the same way, uh, it, it does today as it did before it was planted. Then you can develop on it with any type of utility. And the concern that we had and why we didn't do that fifteen years ago is just that when you develop a property on septic and well, Have to make sure that your septic and wells on your property and adjacent properties are seventy five feet apart. What we found is, is that if we change this ordinance and say, if you have a lot that's fifty feet wide, Still gotta, you still gotta make sure that your septic must be seventy five feet away from the septic. So you still have all the health department parts, all the building code parts. What this code looks, it goes free up probably about a thousand pieces of property throughout the entire county Be developed, to be able to be developed as a right right then, whereas those properties are not able to be developed. It requires zoning to leave people to look for some streetlights. There's costs associated with that, that increases the price of the property. Uh, the other concern that I think was raised, we talked about this, is that will that change these neighborhoods? Because we're not allowed these properties to be developed. The answer is no, because There are, in some instances, these neighborhoods are exist, there are, but there are even houses on these properties. Those houses are legally performed, uh, because they were built probably five years ago. So we do have houses on a lot of properties in the county. There are fifty foot wide lots, but they're, they're grandfathered in. If that house were to burn down or be damaged or destroyed, they'd have to commit to those arguments. This new goal, they can just go ahead and rebuild. Um, but the key here for this proposal is, is that if you don't think it will have any impact on, on neighborhoods, More importantly, it will free up, as I said, at least a thousand pieces of property now developed on it as right, I think that will, uh, that will help with the county's initiative to create To at least Have the opportunity to create more dwelling units in the county. Um, and those are those actually the considerations here.
All right, before we go to questions, let me do one piece of, uh, housekeeping so that we don't violate an open P D X. This meeting was published in the Daily Herald on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, And every municipality within New Page County received notice and sent us notice that they get no problem. Right?
Sure, I'll start. So let's go with this last one, bringing up the workforce. Oh, sorry. Okay. How will, one, if we can talk about it, we may not be, how would that affect like that certain case that's in Florida? One question. Two, will the county be able to publicize? Publicize, get out there and say, we have, for the county board, we have this land available for us. People go, you know, can they go to these people who own the land? Is that accessible? Like, we can start doing things. These people may want to sell the land. So those kind of two questions a lot.
So, so, um, the county, this process is the public process by which we are sort of telling the world, you know, that here's what we're doing. If this ultimately gets approved by the county board, there will be a press release and there will be outreach to property owners That will tell them that their properties are now legal and conforming and can be developed. There are property owners that have banks of this, that are acutely aware that, that their properties might be, uh, Be able to be developed as a right in the future. One of the things that we don't want to sort of publicize too much right now is the fact that, you know, uh, These particular properties might be available to develop for the future because it's changed. The reason for that is that We don't want to arbitrarily or artificially increase the value of those properties either, because people might go running out and start to buy those things. This, this is an attempt to make those, to get land out there available to be developed. Uh, but we don't want to artificially increase the value of those properties. Now, those properties will increase in value because right now if they're not built, Soon as this very simple change goes through, those properties will have value now. We, those property owners will know about it and they can decide to sell those properties to developer. Developer, they can decide what the free market is going to ask for those properties.
Okay.
But that's how we're handling that.
Question. So, so can you talk about the first question about, like, Hmm, so the case we have before is obviously candy because it's not one of these store. So it's just where, are we going to run into the same thing where these suddenly become Both valuable in a way for development and then again, all the neighbors around it are like, no, no, we don't want this type of thing. Okay, I guess that could be.
Well, well, this is different than the zoning cases that we're dealing with right now.
Okay.
But as it relates.
I just asked if we're not going to anything out of presence of.
Hundred percent.
So unless somebody doesn't want to hold.
No.
No, I'm not, I'm one of them, but I'm just kind of.
That's my point. I, I don't want to get into that. They are extinguishable from that. Um, having said that, the only thing I can say to what would happen to, you know, existing lots of record That were planted before nineteen fifty seven, because of a zoning change are now able to be built as a right, what would happen? The same situation occurred fifteen years ago when we did this and the answer was that A lot of people who now had houses that would be built next door to them Always thought that they were able to be developed because they were no different than their houses. When they had a home on them, they couldn't understand why the property wasn't being developed. So it was a situation where they just thought that people didn't have the desire to build all these pieces of properties, Not knowing that they were not legally allowed to develop them. So from that standpoint, from that perspective, it's our belief that when a house does go up on one of these lots that Here to four wasn't, uh, allowed to be developed on, the same thing will happen that happened fifteen years ago. People will say, oh, there's a new house. I was wondering what someone's going to build on that piece of property. Because that property is those, no bigger in size or smaller in size than a property that's already housed.
Or those people who have that house in cells with those developers or people, right?
That, that it becomes a free market issue. We're just trying to open a plan available.
That, that's all I want to know. Next question, fencing.
Yep.
Um, I totally get what you're, you're doing there. One of the questions I had that I was bothered by that case was maybe last summer. Remember the case over here in Milton Township, not far, where they didn't know the right side of the fence? Has that been like? Is it, is that being addressed? Now, I got it. I think most people got it. He didn't. Maybe not even want to get it. I don't know, but There's something going on to that. So there's no misunderstanding going forward on that type of thing.
We have not addressed that, this proposed change. And the reason we have this is that we have had in on the books The requirement that the good side or finish side of the fence pays outward towards the neighbors, property, the chase advice of way on course for these twenty five years. This is the first instance where we had one person that say, I disagree with that interpretation. Um, so we think that the interpretation and, and the language itself speaks for itself. It's clear. Um, it's just that in that particular case, in this particular case over here, that fence was a very, very nice fence, both on, on both sides. It just so happens that the structural components of the fence were on the outside as opposed to the inside. And in just about every instance, uh, except maybe two or three, um, because of mistake, uh, in the other instances, People always put the good side of the fence facing outwards to the neighbors. The only time other than this one here That it hasn't occurred to somebody a mistake and they fixed it, they had the fence company out, come out, changed the panels.
So he did it himself. So sometimes I always am curious, like, what? And you don't have to tell me right now, you can do about whatever. What happens after we, we made our decision? And that, I think, was final decision. I mean, so I take it he just, he changed it? I mean.
So that decision, any, any decision by the zoning board appeals a recommendation to county development. County development, and that makes a recommendation to county, county board has violated his petition. Go count, go county board, that situation denied petition.
Okay.
And what the petitioner did is that he decided that, and I know it sounds a little bit silly on both sides, the government side and his side, But what the petitioner did is instead of taking down the structured components on the outside, he put structural components on the inside. So effectively hit two finish sides of them.
Oh, okay, so.
That was, that was the resolution.
Thank you. That's all I learned on whatever happened. So. No more questions. Thank you.
Okay, and we're finished tonight? I have to do with beekeeping.
Can you speak loud, please?
Yes, I can. Beekeeping, yep. Um, reading this, uh, does it, are we requiring that you go four H? From it, like if I decided I wanted to be beekeeping and I can read all of the other things, but I don't want to join four H. Is that okay?
No, you have to have, you have to have a certification from the Department of Agriculture. You also have to have certification from the Department of Agriculture. Uh, the state requires in order to have beekeeping irrespective of the jurisdiction, you gotta get a license Or certification from the state to share that bees. The reason for that, I, you'll read this. The reason for that is there's only a specific type of bee, a honeybee, that you're allowed to have beekeeping bees. Uh, so that's the first part. And the four H component. Uh, so that's the first part. And the four H component is to sort of mitigate the concerns of the elected officials. You all, who all have been on the vote on that is that who's sort of watching all this? And the answer is the four H. Four H has always had programs for not only children, but young adults to either keep bees. And, and have a four H project they bring to the county fair or for educators to educate people on how to keep bees. Uh, so that's why we, we're comfortable with the four H program. We've done four H certifications for property of a thousand square feet for years.
Sure. But, yeah, thank you. Okay, then, Mike, what's the rest of our agenda?
It's the close, the closing hearing.
Oh, yeah, what's close, the hearings. For any old business? I don't think so. Any new business?
No.
All right, then uh, we will stand adjourned.